Good evening and welcome to the LBJ School of Public Affairs and to this evening's event, Austin City Council Redistricting. What can Austin learn from California? Thank you for being here with us. I'd like at this point to introduce Steve Bickerstaff, who is an attorney and he is also a professor at the UT School of Law. Steve?
Good evening. I will be the moderator tonight, but I'll need my comments. I wrote in a brief, I'll just introduce the speakers. But first, I'd like to express thanks to those people who have made it possible. Sherry Yvette, who has provided this room. The Law School of Dean Farnsworth, who has provided the quorum hall to allow us to bring Mr. Ancelotti from California. And AGR, which I think has, I'm not a member of AGR, but I have been very impressed by the effectiveness and of their ability to develop Proposition 3 of the passage. And we're here tonight because this is a historic period in Austin. We have chosen to move from a system that was seven council members elected at large by place to a system that is 11 members of the council. Ten that elected from single-member districts and one elected at large. And we have also decided to have those districts drawn by a commission that is independent of the city council. And this is unusual. It was the first time in Texas you've had such a result. Let me introduce the speakers tonight. Our guest is primarily the speaker. That's Mr. Angelo Ancelotti. To my left, he is a law professor from California. But please don't hold that against him. Either California or a law professor, either one. But he has served on the commission. He is a member of the commission in California that successfully drew the congressional districts and all of the state legislative districts in California. I would say successfully because it was impressive to me from my view in Texas that they were able to do what they're able to do in so diverse a state as California. I've asked Angelo to open the presentation tonight and then to come back and to respond to the other speakers. And the second speaker will be Mr. Fred Lewis. Fred is general counsel for the AGR and has played a major part in the AGR's success. And he has video for us tonight. The third is from the city auditor's office. Mr. Ken Mory, who is the city auditor, was not able to be here. But we have a point person for this throughout, through this process from the auditor's office, and that is Mr. Jason Hadafi. And for those who've watched the auditor's office, you have to understand the duties placed on the auditor were extraordinary. But the job that has been done by the auditor's office is also extraordinary. And the best indication of that is that while people were fearful that there would not be enough eligible applicants for the commission, we actually have more than 450 eligible applicants. And that's largely due, I think, to the excellent work from the auditor's office. And the next is Carolyn LeVey. She is, Carolyn is the certified public accountant. She is one of the three independent auditors who are part of the applicant review panel. And they have the awesome task, that's a horrible word, but they have the very difficult task of taking, of selecting the 60 most qualified applicants from this group of over 450. And I have attended most of their meetings and I think what they have done has been commendable and fair. And as difficult as it will be, I think that we will find soon that they have picked an excellent panel. Incidentally, how many people here have applied to be on the commission? All right, thank you very much. And our final speaker is Mr. Fishkin. Professor Fishkin, Professor Joseph Fishkin of the University of Texas Law School. He is an expert in the areas of constitutional law and election law and will provide us an overview of commissions nationwide. Then we will come back to Angelo for closing. And we should, that should take about 50 minutes. And then it's your turn. We would like questions. We're here tonight to provide as many answers as we possibly can. All I would ask of the questions is keep in mind that we're being taped, which means that you need to have the microphone and you need, please, to state your name and to whom you're addressing the question. Perhaps later, right now, Angelo?
Well, good evening. Thank you, Steve. So I want to thank Steve and the various, or many organizers that actually helped pull this event together. I've been here in Austin since last night. I had a very full morning and lunch as well in terms of addressing a lot of these important issues that you're going through right now. And certainly want to congratulate you on going through a lot of changes and revising many aspects of how you elect your city council and how you're dealing with a branded democratic process. As you all know, you are, among other things, expanding the size of your city council, changing from an at-large to a district system. You've changed the number of years you have terms for city council members. You've created brand-new criteria for redistricting. And the main reason I'm here is to talk about one other thing, which is you're creating an independent commission that will ultimately draw those council districts. And again, I appreciate the fact that so many of you actually here are a part of that process and applying to be on the commission. What I wanted to do, and this is, you know, we have a slideshow or a PowerPoint presentation, sort of highlight some of the elements of what we did in California. And again, it's very much modeled, or your ordinance is very much modeled on the California model. California is not Austin, you know, California is a state. California is a large state. We had to draw several maps and many more districts for most of those maps. But the spirit of law, I think, is obviously very similar. And those who, like Steve and others who worked on the drafting of the ordinance chose it for particular reasons. So I want to highlight some of those similarities and how those worked in practice. And I think I'll probably say for that, since I get two, sort of two bites of the apple here, I'll maybe for the second part of it, talk about what might be things you should look out for and maybe not try to do or try to do because, like any process, it's imperfect. And there are things that are written into the law that you might not expect to happen in practice. And they might happen here, they might not happen. But it's important to sort of think through some of those possibilities. So if, my friend to my right is going to be clicking the buttons for me. So as here in Austin, the changes in the system, at least our redistricting system, occurred through dissatisfaction with the legislative process. So you went through a valid initiative process here. We went through the same kind of process in California. And Proposition 11, which was the primary vehicle for creating the commission, was not the first attempt to try to change who does redistricting in California. There had been a number of attempts previously by initiative to change the process. The commission was not the first type of, or first, it was not the only type of system that had been put before the voters. If you're familiar at all with California's redistricting over the last several decades, it's actually only been done by the legislature twice in the last four decades prior to the commission. It actually was done by the Supreme Court of California in the 70s and 90s because the legislature and the government were of different parties or controlled by one party and different in the governor's seat couldn't agree. So actually, one type of system that had been proposed was to actually have some retired judges be the ones who drew the lines. Because that actually had been done in the 70s and 90s. But that didn't, that didn't pass when it was put in front of the voters. So Prop 11 in 2008 was put together, you know, like Austin, a lot of different folks trying to look at revisions in the system. Some of them perhaps out of self-interest. As you may know, California's legislature is democratic, party-controlled. If you're in a minority party, very often you want to change the way things are done. And if you don't like the way the legislative majority is doing things, you might look for a different system. There was no secret about that, that the Republican Party endorsed Proposition 11. But there are also a lot of other interests, including various good government organizations like Common Cause, Legal Women Voters, who supported a change in the system. And in particular, because in the 2001 cycle, the, largely because it was viewed as an incumbency protection plan, the Republicans and the Democrats got together in that round to really just sort of create safe districts. There was even broader dissatisfaction with the status quo. The commission was created under this particular law. Various criteria were established, different from the existing criteria. And we were charged at that point with three sets of maps. Two of the state legislative houses, the Assembly and the Senate, and then with some was the Board of Equalization, which is a tax policy body. Congress, the congressional delegation wasn't included at the time. Two years later, you saw Proposition 20 being passed that added the congressional redistricting process to the citizen commission's mandate. And there was also, FYI, there was actually an opposing initiative which would have repealed Prop 11 just two years after it had been passed. That went down to defeat, but obviously, folks wanted to go back to the original position. Okay. The next slide. What are our, what were our criteria? Again, very similar to what you're going to be using here in Austin. Obviously, you're not dealing with statewide, you're dealing with citywide. But you are, there are very close parallels here. Some federal requirements, the constitutional requirements that the districts be of equal size, compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act, both Section 5, which is the preclearance section, as well as Section 2. Several of our counties in California were bound by Section 5 preclearance. They had to be contiguous. That means they had to be basically not separated out. You couldn't have sort of one over here and one over and skip over one to make sure, you had to make sure they were actually connected within the district. You had to try as much as possible to keep cities and counties and neighborhoods and communities of interest intact. There was a definition of communities of interest, not necessarily that precise, but it at least gave us some guidance in terms of how we were looking at what communities of interest would be. Compactness, which is, for lack of a better term, looking at sort of geographically tighter-looking districts. I mean, there's a specific definition that's in the law itself, but in a lot of ways, you don't want districts that are too spread out. So those classic gerrymandered districts that seem tentacled or don't seem to have any order to them. Although there are underlying reasons for looking like that, but trying to have them look, for lack of a better, like a nice tight picture. And then nesting, which is actually something you're not having to deal with, which we were trying to create districts where the Assembly districts, two Assembly districts fit within one Senate district. We accomplished that occasionally, but because it was a lower requirement, we produced them that weren't nested. Just as importantly, and this is, again, a parallel here, is we were prohibited from looking at a number of things, including incumbency, whether someone was a candidate for office, and partisanship, so it's party criteria. You couldn't use those. If you look at how a lot of redistricting is done, those are the things that actually get looked at first, right? So even if you didn't have a commission, this really changed the ballgame, right? Because if you say you can't look at incumbency or you can't look at people's candidacy, even if you had incumbents doing it, they'd have a hard time doing that. They might try to do something else, but that's a big factor, not, not being able to use those factors. Okay. Let me talk about the selection process because you're in the middle of it. And again, this is very close to what you're doing here. But we had a lot more people apply. And it's obviously, it's a state redistricting, but it was, and it's also a part, there's some partisanship concerns that are part of the law. So 14 members, that's just like you have here. But there had to be party representation within the commission itself. And it was designed this way because there were accommodations and compromises that were set up among supporters. So you had, you had to have five of the largest party. In California, it's the Democratic Party. Five of the next largest party, the Republican Party. And then four of neither party. So it could be a, you know, Green Party, American Independent Party, various smaller parties, or you weren't affiliated with any party. That's important to note because that's not necessarily how the ratio exists with the parties and registration. So one thing that's interesting in California is that both the Democratic Party and the Republican Party are getting smaller relative to the others. And actually, the others will probably exceed the Republican Party registration, probably in about two years if trends continue. That's, now that's enshrined in the California Constitution, so it's not easy to change. But that's interesting in terms of how we're looking at, where things are going with parties. But that's, that's the current state of law and that's how we fill the commission. We use the Bureau, what's known as the Bureau of State Audits. You're also required to use folks who are experienced, you know, as accountants and as largely who was on the three-member panel. Again, sort of similar selection process, trying to, as much as possible, have less partisanship, less politics. But party did play a role. So one of those review panel members had to be a Democrat and one had to be a Republican and one had to be an Other. So it didn't disappear entirely. But the whole role again of the, that body was designed to sort of make it less political. Lot of people filed, okay? Over 30,000 people filed initial applications. Not everybody finished, not everybody completed the full application. I think you're also going through a similar process with a lot of, you know, essay questions, trying to indicate how you're qualified, what your strengths are in terms of this kind of process. Over 4,000 people went through that process. So that's a lot, that's a lot to review. And those auditors spent a lot of time going through their applications. So you can imagine how big the task was for them. And again, various criteria were employed there, very similar to what you're looking at here. They, however, unlike here, they did go through an interview and process. So they narrowed it down to 120 people, which is quite a test to go from over 4,000 down to 120. And they actually interviewed 120 applicants for about 90 minutes each. So it took several weeks for them just to do that interview process. All of that was webcast, it was all open meeting, which as I'll talk about in other parts of the process, a very open and transparent process. And as much as possible, everything is done in public. At that point, after the interview, and they, I'm sorry, next slide. They got down to 60, 60 applicants. There was, at that point, the list was transmitted to the state legislative leaders. They could strike a number of applicants. They could strike a lot, actually. They could strike up to 24. And they exercised all of their strikes. Now, there's no transparency required. So if there was any sort of black box in the process, that was it. Where, and it's a sort of like, if you're familiar with how juries are put together, they're what are known as peremptory strikes. So the prosecutor or the defense attorney doesn't have to really give any reason. They just get to knock somebody out and say goodbye and that's it. Very similar. So no reason given, no reason required and no reason given. But that's quite a lot, 24 out of 60. It's quite a high percentage. And we tried, people would try to guess certainly. And the folks had the reason, but nobody knew exactly why. In any case, you ended up with 36 people. Again, same process here. You're going to end up with eight people selected by lottery. We had to do it again by party breakdown. So that had to be three Republicans, three Democrats and three, two Others. And then those eight would pick the remaining six. Now, whenever you go through a lottery process, you know, in a perfect sort of random sampling and statistically speaking, you have a certain likelihood that it's going to be sort of representative of your population. There's, if you know anything about statistics, there's always a possibility, and gets smaller and smaller, that you'll have a very skewed draw. But it is statistically possible. So you could, for example, end up an entirely male group, entirely female group, entirely one race, or they could all be from one part of the city. But it's less likely to happen, but it is possible. So that's why the six are supposed to sort of try to fill out the diversity of the panel. But you have to sort of work with what you've got. Those eight did pick the remaining six. And the commission was seated basically at the end of December, beginning of January. So again, the 14 people meeting in January. Now, that whole selection process took over a year. Okay, I think the initial application period opened at the end of 2010. They completed it, all the commissioners being seated by 2011. Okay, if you look at the budget for it, that actually cost more to do than the commission did for its work. Now, that's okay because that's the part of the process that was really different, right? And again, who does it is important, and that's an important in-between, the legislators doing it and the commission doing it. But if you're going to actually try to have a pretty lengthy process, which includes various elements, and you want to make sure people are qualified, and you've done a lot of outreach to make sure you've got a diverse pool, you have to spend some money to do that. And it sounds like you've done quite a lot here. And you also have to work with folks who are, you know, in the community and are willing to also do some outreach too. That was a big part of the selection process. Next slide. These are the commissioners, okay? Again, a very diverse group geographically, from all parts of the state. Not every part. You can't, you can't represent an entire state in 14 people. It's not possible, right? Yeah, and that's, that's a trade-off, right? You want to have a workable team of people who can get work done and reach some agreement to produce a final product. But you can't represent 37 million people with 14. But you know, you can try to hit some of that, right? So you know, Northern California, Southern California, gender, racial and ethnic diversity. You know, we have probably more lawyers than you probably have in the general population. Five of the people were at least had law degrees. Only one person actually was still practicing. Couple were sort of in philanthropy, couple were working, had their own businesses, small businesses, weren't practicing law. We had a number of urban planners, a couple retired folks, but they had all had a lot of experience either with redistricting itself or something related. One of our members, for example, who was a corporate executive for many years, was the director of the US Census under a couple administrations. So high-level government experience as well. A number of, a couple of engineers, an architect, a chiropractor. A number of folks had experience with local government. None of us had a lot of experience with state government, which was a factor because when you started working for state government and you're trying to figure out all the rules of state government, that's when you realize you need some help. And you have to have a really good staff that knows the, all the, you know, the contracting requirements, almost the best to go into play just to actually hire people and to get, you know, consultants on. That's really important. But again, a very diverse group of people along many dimensions. Okay, next slide. So it took, it took a year to pick the commission. It took eight months to finish the work. Okay, so we had a really tight timeline. One thing to note is that when Proposition 20, the second proposition that added the congressional redistricting was passed, it also included a change in the deadline. It actually advanced the deadline a month. Okay, so originally it was supposed to be in September, it went up to August. Now, there's some reasons for trying to get it done by August. Not the least of which is trying to give folks who want to run for office enough time to figure things out. And if there are going to be some legal challenges, you want to get those out of the way. But it left us with not as much time. So one thing we did, and I'll talk about this a little bit in a few moments, we actually were able to work with the legislature after we were all done to sort of change the timeline. So we got some more time to, in the early part of the process, to pick people and to get the commission started. So again, January, the commission is seated. There's no staff, okay? There's no infrastructure other than sort of working with the Secretary of State's office to try to get a transition going. But you had to get things going really quickly. So that first month, the commission was really focusing on just getting people hired, getting the staff built up. We had to hire consultants, we had to hire a couple attorneys, including one who knew about the Voting Rights Act. And you're under the gun because you have to get, your census data just comes out basically in March and April. So all of a sudden, everybody's going to start looking at the data and start giving you maps. So you have to be ready for that. And that was one of the major milestones, markers, was getting all the data from the census. And folks were starting to prepare their maps. Very ambitious public input hearing schedule. Again, one of the major values underlying the law itself and commission's work was transparency. You're concerned about a legislative process that cuts backroom deals and even though they have public hearings, they don't really let you know what they're doing. We were trying to go against that. We wanted to make sure everybody knew exactly what we were doing. All our decisions were made in public, live streamed over the web, very much open to those, at least have the technology to watch from, from outside. We set a deadline of June to actually put a first draft together. That was very aggressive. And looking back, that was probably not the wisest thing to do because we didn't have all our information together, frankly. And that, we suffered from that. We were criticized for some areas, particularly around Voting Rights Act compliance because we hadn't gotten all of our data together. And I think that's something to think about. Don't try to rush to have multiple drafts. I don't think you have to have multiple drafts under your ordinance, but we actually had a goal of putting out two drafts. We weren't actually able to put out a second draft. We did a sort of compromise. But we did release a first draft actually in June, which was pretty, pretty fast. We had a number of hearings afterwards. We went basically to live mapping so folks could actually go online or they could come to a hearing up in Sacramento, the state capital, to actually look at what we were doing rather than having a draft that was circulating. That was the best we could do. We would love to have had a second draft. We couldn't get it out in time. And we basically finished our maps at the end of July because we needed to actually have a time to let people take a look at them. And by mid-August, they were certified, okay? Now, that sort of condenses a lot in there, but that gives you the timeline, a very tight timeline. We had various committees that were tasked with doing different things. I was on the legal committee, I was on the technical committee, which had to do with a lot of the data crunching and the software. We had public relations, we had sort of the financial, various sets of folks who were so specialized and very much aligned to what their backgrounds were in terms of, you know, experience to try to get, get a lot of the work done, but always in public. So even under our open meeting laws, subcommittees had to meet in public. Next slide. Again, the public input process was over several months. We did 34 hearings throughout the state. These lasted a long time. They were up in several hours. They were either on a weekend afternoon or in the evening. Over 2,700 people came out to speak during those hearings. Ranged from all ages. We had kids who were with their parents who actually testified about their neighborhoods. We had seniors, everything in between. A lot of folks who spoke different languages testified in their first language. We had interpreters. A lot of written comments, which came in by email or fax or mailed in, over 20,000 comments. Not all of it was perfectly useful. A lot of it could be redundant. And that's a reality you have to deal with too. If you're dealing with public hearings, you know that you often get a lot of people saying the same thing. And that's okay, that's part of the process. But I think we were able to get a lot of data and certainly a lot of groups who submitted statewide maps or regional maps, as well as folks who just sort of said, well, here's my neighbor. Here's where I live. And I think it'd be good to keep this part of this area together. And that's, you know, that's, if you gave us a little hand-drawn map or you took a photocopy of a map and you gave it to us, that was, that was perfectly fine. You didn't have to come up with, you know, a fancy software-drawn map. Next slide. Again, this is, this is California. I'd recommend maybe going online if you want to actually see our maps in more detail. But you know, 80, the 80-member Assembly, the 40-member Senate, four districts for the Board of Equalization, and then 53 House of Representatives seats. Okay. Next slide. We were sued. Okay, we were sued. Now, you know, when you draw maps, it's sort of, it's a zero sum. And you know, you, I used to joke, well, if only we could, you know, next part of Mexico or next part of Nevada, we could, everything could sort of add up together. We'd have nice, perfect districts. But you can't, you can't go outside the boundaries of the state of California. So what an inconvenience, right? To have to stick within your boundaries. But that's the part of the zero sum that goes into drawing. But that's the part of the zero sum that goes into drawing maps, and you're not going to please everybody. You can try to, as much as possible, accommodate a lot of different interests, but some folks are going to be unhappy. So a couple of our maps were challenged, the congressional map was challenged in litigation, senate map was challenged. There were particular venues, some of those had to go to the California Supreme Court. There was a Voting Rights Act challenge that was brought, although it was brought actually by Republican interest, not necessarily by minority interest. All of those were lost. Okay, they lost. None of those, the commission's maps were upheld as both constitutional and legal under federal and state law. There is actually a lawsuit that's out right now, which is not a challenge of the map itself, but it's actually a challenge of the process of using race and gender. We actually have a constitutional amendment that was passed back in the 90s of limits, how you can use race and how public employees can use race. And that's actually still pending, but just FYI, we're still expecting to win that, because we think the commission isn't covered by, as an entity, isn't covered by that particular constitutional provision. We tried to change the process, and we were actually successful in getting the timeline changed to some statutory amendments. The last thing that happened most recently is that the senate map was up for a referendum. There was, you know, a signature gathering process to try to say, "Well, these maps should be, or that map should be thrown out and redrawn by the state Supreme Court." That lost by a pretty sizable margin, you know, basically 70%. Next slide is just me again. Me again, so my name up there. This was a lengthy process and also a short process. And it's a process that happens, of course, every 10 years. You're doing it for the first time. You're not doing redistricting, you're doing districting. So you're going through a very interesting process where a lot of other changes are occurring. But I think as you're going forward, and I get a second cut in a few minutes, but as you're moving forward, thinking about this, and all of you who are applying for, to be commissioners, thinking, "Wow, I wanted to do that," or somebody may think, "Great, I really wanted to do that now." Regardless of whether you get on the commission, or you're just going to participate in the process and, you know, contributing to the public input and the hearing process, stay involved. You know, it was a lot of fun doing this kind of work. You know, when we were in the middle of things like, you know, two years ago, I was able to take some time off of work to do a lot of this, but it almost became a full-time job, particularly in July and towards August, as we were trying to crunch the final maps out. But it's a great chance to get to know your city better, it's a great chance to meet people in your community, it's a great chance to contribute to the democratic process. Again, you're going through a lot of other changes at the same time, but this sort of process, because it is designed to take away a lot of self-interest that might exist among those who have particular interests, will give you a chance to sort of see how the process works in a different kind of way. But in any case, it's a, it's a great way of seeing, you know, I don't know if you can see our little tagline there, but it's this fair representation, democracy at work. And I think that's something that applies both in California and Austin. And I wish you luck, as I will when I speak again, in moving forward with this process. So thank you.
Good evening. We're going to show during most of my presentation, a video done by AGR, which shows the political movement behind the passage, Proposition 3. I think it's interesting and ironic that it took a political movement to create a de-politicized redistricting or districting process. It would never have happened without the citizens' movement. And the other thing is, I wanted to make the point before we show it, that the political movement, what held people together, and it was a very diverse group in every sense, was their desire to have geographic representation for the city of Austin. And it was integral to that, that we have a fair line-drawing process, so that gerrymandering wouldn't undermine fair geographic representation. And with that, let's show the video.
Concerned citizens from the city of Austin and across the partisan political divide came together on February 26, 2011, to discuss how to finally win geographic representation, also known as single-member districts. This was the long-held dream of NAACP leader Volma Overton Sr. and LULAC, despite six unsuccessful efforts to pass them and a failed court case. The coalition included leaders like Travis County Republican Vice Chair Roger Borgelt, longtime Austin NAACP President Nelson Linder, former state senator Gonzalo Barrientos, and hundreds of activists of all persuasions and neighborhoods. Retired political consultant Peck Young and independent organizer Linda Curtis of ChangeAustin.org led the efforts of what became the largest and broadest coalition ever seen in Austin city politics. The coalition worked by consensus through August 2011, before we officially became Austinites for Geographic Representation. We grew to 31 organizations, including the League of Women Voters, the Austin Neighborhoods Council, home builders and environmentalists, Green Party leaders, libertarian activists, former officials like County Judge Bill Aileshire, and so many more. AGR's first debate was over whether to have a simple district system, or to have a so-called hybrid system with some citywide seats besides the mayors. After months of discussion, Peck Young convinced us that in order to meet requirements of the Voting Rights Act, 10 districts was the least number of seats that would not dilute the African-American vote. It also just so happened that all neighborhoods wanted equal representation. The coalition also grappled with the question of who would draw the district lines. One of the nation's legal experts on redistricting is UT Law Professor Emeritus Steve Bickerstaff, who advised AGR to use the best Citizens Commission model in the country, also developed after six losses. It finally passed in California. Local reform activist attorney Fred Lewis attended AGR meetings and helped us tweak the changes needed for the Austin community. In the fall of 2011, the city council appointed its own committee, the Charter Revision Committee, to address this issue. In spring 2012, this committee, chaired by former state senator Gonzalo Barrientos, recommended the council place 10-1 on the ballot. However, the Austin City Council decided to put their own plan, a hybrid system, on the ballot without a provision for who would draw the lines, allowing the council to decide their own method. This forced the AGR coalition to collect over 30,000 signatures to guarantee a place on the ballot for 10-1. In November 2012, Austinites overwhelmingly, by over 61%, supported Proposition 3, the Citizens Districting 10-1 Plan, which included the first independent citizens' redistricting commission in the state of Texas. This commission is truly independent, with the ability to hire its own staff and consultants to get the maps of 10 geographic districts ready to send to the US Department of Justice in time for the November 2014 election. Legal experts agree that these maps should be submitted to the Department of Justice no later than the end of 2013. AGR hopes that everyone, not only the 14 people who are chosen, starting by a random selection of the first eight commissioners on May 22nd, but thousands of Austinites will participate in the commission hearings. It is our hope that, once the maps are drawn and AGR goes out of existence, we will leave a legacy of the healthy debate and true consensus building that became not just another law, but the spirit of Austin.
And I wanted to add that it is crucial that the public remain involved in this process. One, to provide input to the commission about their neighborhoods and communities of interest. Also, to watch the process, to make sure that there aren't groups trying to game it or strategize it. And also, just to know and watch it, so that you can reassure your neighbors and your friends that it's being done right. So you were involved in getting the process, and you're going to have to be involved in ensuring that it's implemented correctly.
Thank you. Jason Higavie from the City Auditor's Office, and I was the fortunate employee in our department that got tasked with being the project manager over this. And when the City Auditor, Ken Mori, called me in and said, you know, "This is on the ballot, if this passes, we're going to have a list of responsibilities, and I want you to coordinate this." So I took the ordinance at the time, went back to my desk, and I read it. And it was the first time since I had just been out of college that I read something I was responsible for doing, and I didn't know what the heck I was going to do. I was not prepared at all. But it seemed straightforward enough, because the first thing was initiate and widely publicize an application process for the applicant review panel and the redistricting commission. I said, "That seems straightforward enough, let's see what the criteria are like." And that's when it really got to me, what our responsibilities were like. So we coordinated a team, I watched the votes count that evening, it was November 6th, and knew what was in for me the next day. We took over a large conference room, we put together a whole host of employees in our office, and attacked it from so many angles, learned so many things about ourselves. It was really interesting. And, you know, the initiating and widely publicizing was so much more complex. We recognized that there was no way we were going to be able to do this on our own. We enlisted the help of both internal legal counsel to the city, outside counsel that was on contract. And the biggest thing was, we reached out to the public. We met with representatives from AGR almost immediately. We held a public forum that I'm pretty sure I see some familiar faces that were at. How many people were at the forum, by the way? So there's a few people here. And that was just the initial, when we had application information sessions. We tried to involve ourselves with everybody that felt they were a stakeholder or an interested party. We met with all sorts of stakeholder groups, including LULAC, Pau D'Aré, the NAACP, and I'm forgetting a host of them, but we met regularly with people in order to make sure that we were addressing everyone's perspectives. We knew we were going to make people mad, we weren't going to be able to make decisions that pleased everybody. But the thing that we went back to, when I looked at our responsibilities, recognizing I didn't have the skill set to do this, I wasn't educated to do this, the reason we were picked was our independence and our objectivity. And we felt that as long as we held on to that, that we were listening to everybody, making independent decisions, that we weren't being swayed in one direction or the other, then we were going to be all right. And the way we categorized that was, we said if, at the end of this, we've made everybody mad at some point, then we've accomplished our objectives, which I think, I think we did. So it was, it was kind of fun, though. There were things that, you know, I'm an accountant by education, and I took one marketing class in college, and I don't remember doing that well, but this outreach was a big, was a big deal. And so we had to embark on this huge outreach campaign. And it got even, the task got even larger when we recognized how small a percentage of Austin was eligible for this. When we looked at those requirements, we worked with a third party to assemble some data and determine how many people just met the voter registration and participation requirements. And it was less than 40,000 people. And, you know, there was certainly some trends in where those people were located, but they did represent all parts of Austin. And we said, "We have to, we have to reach out to these people, we have to, we have to make sure that they know about this, that they know about the application period, they know how to get an application, how to fill out an application." And we had billboards, we had bus wraps, we had radio spots, we had a TV commercial, we, you know, we had direct mailers to all of these people, a large number of which came back to us, because, you know, addresses aren't static. And every time one of those postcards came back, I just shook my head, I said, "Oh, that's one more person that didn't get the message right at the doorstep." But we, you know, we did what we could, and I think, you know, the results speak for themselves. We didn't get 30,000 people applying, but we got more than we thought we were going to get, and we got a lot of qualified people. And so that was, that was really the big task associated with all of this. And it culminated with, at least to date, it culminated with the random drawing for the applicant review panel. And such a large part of our focus was not just reaching out to everybody, but making sure, you know, there was some specific requirements, that we shall take all necessary and reasonable steps to ensure that we have diversity by gender, race, and, you know, what other age, and a lot of different demographic categories that were listed there. And when the first three members of the applicant review panel were picked, Carolyn said, "We had three white females north of the river." I said, "Well, all that work went nowhere." But the commission panel is very, the commission pool is very diverse, and I hope that our random drawing the next time goes a little bit more representative of the work that we put into it. But we, you know, there's a lot of people here that showed up to the application information sessions, to the public forum, that met with us, at the stakeholder groups. And a lot of this is you guys, we sat there listening to you about, you know, what these qualifications meant to you, how to solicit these qualifications in our application, what is the best way to reach out to people, what's the best way to even obtain the application. At one point, we were talking about specifically just being online, and then we later recognized that internet access was going to be a challenge. We needed to have the ability to let people fill it out by hand, in person, in our office, and how we were going to control all of that paper, which is now stacked in filing cabinet in my office. And so there was a lot of different elements that I guess I have to give thanks to Fred and Steve for passing on to us. But it was fun, it was learning, and we were glad to be a part of it with everybody that's here, and I hope to see this much involvement continue. We definitely were impressed by the amount of interest and involvement from the beginning. Those of you that were at that public forum recognize, we didn't have the space or the facility in mind for the number of people that were going to show up and participate. So we made last-minute adjustments. Same thing with the applications, we didn't anticipate how many were going to flood in. The safe that we bought got overloaded a couple of times, and the mailbox where we received the email applications was flooded with lots and lots of emails. So it was great to see Austinites get so passionate about this. So that's it for my part.
Well, just as you're passing it on to me now, that's how the process worked, was the panel was selected. And it was very good that you selected three alternates also. That wasn't provided for, I don't believe, in the proposition, but it turned out to be a very necessary thing, because we have gone through two people, one person who was not able to serve, the other person was selected because she was an alternate and she had a family emergency. And so we're a little bit in flux right now, but we're getting the job done. And I have to say, when Mr. Bickerstaff said, "The awesome's a bad word," it's a very good word to describe this process, because we've had the amazing experience of being able to read every single application and to see how much talent is out there, and how much interest there is in the process, how informed the citizens of Austin are, and how, of course, how much they love Austin. And every single application demonstrated their love of the city of Austin. And so those were very good things to see. But the painful part is the fact that we had over 450 applications, we have to have a list of 60. And so we really have, we knew we'd come up with more names than we could recommend. So we're in that process right now, seeing, well, who's going to be the top candidates that we're going to recommend to the city council? And we want every one of them to be somebody that we will be very happy to be, that they're selected in the random drawing. We don't want to be in a position where we think, "Oh, I hope they're not selected, I hope they're not selected." We want everybody to be somebody we really stand behind and really cheer when they are selected. At first, I was a little worried that in our meetings, we're going to have a lot of media attention, we're going to be doing our jobs in the spotlight, we will be second-guessed at every turn, which, of course, we try to be transparent and allow for community input and have a clear process. But apparently, there's not that much interest in the people coming to our meetings, which I'm fairly thankful of, too, because, and I think I know why. When I was on my way to the first meeting, I heard the news report saying, "Well, the first step in the Austin single-member district process is starting tonight, there'll be a member of three accountants." But who wants to be in a meeting with three accountants? And actually, I think they were right, because our meetings are very boring. There's very little problem with what we do, we do our work independently, we take the applications, we, on suggestion, citizen input, we divided it up into county precincts for the Travis County, just as a way of attacking the problem. And then we took it precinct by precinct, where we would, where we would each read the application, come back with a score, basically. And then where we all agreed on the scores, would use that part of And then where we all agreed on the scores, would use that part of the list and then go on to another round. Right now, we're getting ready for round three, where all the applications have been reviewed, we've scored them all. And then the next round two was when two people had picked this candidate, the other person had not, then we need the other person to go back and reconsider to make sure that there's not something they missed. And so, again, we're at the painful part of round three, where we're going to have to take names off the list to get it down to 60. It's amazing, as I said, the amount of talent that's out there. And so we're going to send a letter at the end of the process for the people who were not selected, for the group of 60, to say, "Please stay involved in the process because people have strong abilities." Of course, we have to look at relevant abilities, we have to look at strictly the criteria that's in the city charter. And we want to make sure that we're very clear that we are going strictly by that criteria. Now, people, different members may have different interpretations of that criteria, but we try to discuss those somewhat at meetings also too, so everybody knows that we're working off the same page. A lot of our information is on the website, there's a videotape of our meetings, you know, welcome you to look at that and please come if you do have citizen input into the process. So far, citizen input has been very supportive, very helpful, in fact, and we appreciate it. And we invite your comments. We're having a meeting tomorrow night at City Hall, in fact, if you would like to visit. But I'll just say in conclusion that reading all these applications, there are so many people who have such good stories to tell about Austin, about their experiences, about just their worldview and perspective. But unfortunately, we can only pick 60 people out of that entire group, and that's where we are.
So I teach election law here at University of Texas School of Law. And I thought I would just take a few minutes to set in a little bit of a larger context what problems are redistricting commissions like this one trying to solve? Because that relates to what will the work of the commission actually look like. So courts started to get involved in redistricting in the United States in a serious way in the 1960s in response to a problem of malapportement, where you could have districts, in Connecticut, there was one district where, in rural Connecticut, 181 people had the same number of representatives as an urban district with 81,000. And this obvious unfairness, which stretched across lots of states, some of whom hadn't redrawn their maps for the whole first half of the 20th century, was such an obvious problem that the court eventually decided and violated the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment of the Constitution. So, we got a jurisprudence out of this, still active today, one person, one vote. The districts need to contain the same numbers of people. And that becomes the first thing that any redistricting commission anywhere in the United States, including this one here, is charged with. However, it became clear even in the 1960s that just because you have a lot of districts that contain equal numbers of people, does not mean, for instance, that racial minorities have any representation at all. So you have a lot of jurisdictions, a lot of states, a lot of smaller jurisdictions, where even after the Voting Rights Act knocks out grandfather clauses and literacy tests and all that old stuff, you still could have a situation where racial minority group might make up, you know, 30% even of the people of the city and get none of the seats. Now, how does that happen? Well, one of the common ways that happened, especially throughout the South, saw a lot of litigation about at-large systems with numbered places or numbered posts, which is to say, number post election, everybody's elected at large and there's a separate race for place one, separate race for place two, and so on. And you may recognize that because that is actually the system that we use in Austin right now, that we used until the passage of this charter amendment. Now, in a lot of cities throughout the South especially, there were challenges under the Voting Rights Act and under the Constitution to that way of doing things. And usually, those challenges resulted in geographic districts. And actually, as was mentioned in that video, there was such a challenge in Austin, but some wonderful lawyers from the city of Austin successfully defended Austin. I thought, Steve Biggestest was one of, was one of those excellent lawyers, defended Austin's district successfully. And so the legal challenge failed, as did a bunch of previous proposals to do it by charter amendment to change the system until this one. So, in any event, courts view throughout, I would say, the last half a century has mostly been that at-large elections, at least at-large elections for numbered posts, could be different if you have different systems where you have multi-member districts at large. But numbered post, place one, place two, place three, at-large, that's your system, courts have generally held that it would be better to move to a system of geographic representation simply for compliance with the Voting Rights Act. That is to say, for ensuring that racial minority groups have a fair shot at electing their candidates of choice, which is the standard in the Voting Rights Act. And so this is the second thing that any redistricting commission today, including this one in Austin, has to do. And it's sort of a hierarchy. So the first thing is one person, one vote, you have to comply with that. And then while complying with that, the next thing you have to do is comply with the Voting Rights Act, which includes this idea that minority groups need an opportunity, an equal opportunity, to elect their candidates of choice. And then come all the other things listed in the charter that you're charged with doing. So just as a note, the chance for reg minorities to elect their candidates of choice is not the same as elect candidates who are themselves members of racial minority. Those two things come apart in an important way. Sometimes you have racial minority group who may choose a candidate who is not a member of their same group. And sometimes you may have someone who is a racial minority themselves, who is not the choice of that community, but rather is the choice of a bunch of other voters. So these two things come apart. Okay. So even if you protect numerical, sort of number one line, the one person, one vote, and even if you protect Voting Rights Act, minority groups' ability to elect their candidates of choice, there's still two major looming problems that redistricting commissions are usually aimed at trying to solve. So the first is partisan interests in the redistricting process, and then the second one is individual politicians' self-interest. So first, partisan interests. In a context like the city of Austin, where our elections are nonpartisan, this is less of a problem. We don't have the problem here of sort of Republicans are going to gerrymander the lines against Democrats, Democrats are going to gerrymander the lines against Republicans. If you want to know what that looks like, just look at the congressional map here in Austin, where, as you'll notice, Austin is chopped up into a bunch of slices of pie by a Republican legislature in Texas, so that you have districts where, bit of Austin, but then a much larger Republican area that will reliably outvote that bit of Austin and that will reliably elect Michael McCaul or Mark Smith or what have you. And this is something that I think most of the, many of the Republicans who helped draw this congressional map would be open about because this is part of the aim when you're drawing districts, is to, you can't go too far toward partisan gerrymandering, but courts have yet to actually strike down a state for going too far. And they all go pretty far. So that's the partisan interest problem. But in Austin, within the city, it doesn't look like that. We have nonpartisan elections, but one of the things that the redistricting committee's going, the redistricting commission is going to have to decide is, are there features that function in Austin in a way that's similar to the way party functions statewide? That is, are there political axes of disagreement that are so important, that are so reliably determinative of who wants to elect one person, who wants to elect another, that they amount to what is, for your charter's purposes, communities of interest and those sort of phrases? You need to, the commission will need to think about, what are the important axes of politics in Austin, the things that people want representation on the basis of? So finally, the self-interest of individual politicians. This is straightforward problem. Anytime the politicians themselves draw the lines, they are very aware of how those lines will affect their own chances, not only in general elections, but sometimes in primaries. You'll have representatives who get to draw their own districts, who will try to include enough voters from the other side that they won't be subject to a primary challenge. And it gets very intricate if people know what they're doing. Also, when party leadership draws the lines, you'll see people, some representatives losing their districts because they disaway the leadership within their own party. So this is, this is not partisan interest, it's individual incumbents fighting for their own political futures. So citizens' commissions around the country, and especially in California, have been framed as a solution to all of these problems, but particularly this last problem. And I think this last problem was particularly on display in California in 2000, when the famous bipartisan gerrymander that Professor Anchetan mentioned protected every single incumbent of the Democratic and Republican parties in the U.S. House of Representatives, except one district that they had to get rid of. And so they got rid of the district of this, this poor guy Gary Condon, who is a whole other story. In any event, basically, the bipartisan gerrymander was safe seats for everyone. No one's going to have to face a voter again. And this obviously holds certain appeal if you are an incumbent member of the U.S. House of Representatives, and really is not in the interest of any of the citizens, any of the other citizens of California. So that was the, that was what precipitated the creation of this California commission. So there are a few other places around the country that use commissions in the drawing of electoral maps in, at the municipal level, but really none that do it this way, the way modeled on the California commission. And here, I'm really relying on, this is an area that Professor Biggestest has written about, there's a few cities where you have advisory commissions, actually, this includes Dallas, familiarly, but those advisory commissions are often picked by the city council members. So it's one level of remove, but it's still ultimately the politicians and it's only advisory anyway. Then there are places like San Francisco where it's not advisory, the commission really does draw the lines, but they're chosen by elected officials in some fashion or another. There are a few places, San Diego since the early 90s has drawn their lines using municipal judges. Minneapolis and St. Paul use charter commissions now, where the members are appointed by a judge. And basically, that's more or less it. And then there's us. So the city of Austin, I would say, is really on the vanguard of bringing the California model of how to do a citizens' redistricting commission to the drawing of lines in a municipality. And if things go well, no pressure, then it will likely be adopted by some other city. So, one other thing that's very unusual about this commission, this time, this first round, is that you have a blank slate. One of the, in the charter, you'll see one of the things, after you're done with complying with one person, one vote, complying with the Voting Rights Act, geographic contingency, communities of interest, you go down your list and toward the end, there's, "To the extent practicable, district boundaries will be drawn using the boundaries of existing districts." So that means that every future commission under this charter amendment will, to the extent practicable, be trying to keep relatively close to what you all are, what this commission does. So what this commission does the first time is especially important. So I suppose in summary, you know, the idea of selecting citizens by lot and using this lottery of citizens as an element, it's an important and old democratic idea. It long predates even the idea of elected representatives themselves. It's an idea from ancient Athens. And I think it's wonderful to be bringing that idea, a little element of randomness, along with the idea of ordinary citizens, back into a process that feeds into our modern system of elected representation.
So, just a couple remarks. I think we want to open up for questions, but again, it sounds like you're moving forward in a nice, healthy way. You've gotten a good applicant pool, you've got a good process going. I think it's the 16th that you're setting as the deadline to...
Correct.
Earlier, certainly. Earlier, the better, to get that going. Couple just hints, tips. And this, maybe this goes, not to influence the selection process directly, but you want folks who are good team players. I think one of the reasons we had a good commission is that everybody was dedicated to the task at hand. We were all believers in the mission of the commission and its need to be transparent. We believed in the rule of law and we tried to follow the law as best we could. But we worked really well together, even though, if you'd look at the composition of the commission, we would disagree on a lot of other things outside of redistricting because it ran the full spectrum, sort of right to left. And, you know, we, I'm sure we butted heads around a lot of controversial issues, whether it's, you know, tax policy, fiscal policy, social issues, et cetera, et cetera. And that's okay, that's a good thing, actually. But I think all of us are really dedicated to, you know, working with a new, a brand-new process, making sure it worked well, because it was the first time and you're doing it for the first time. And just to reiterate a point that Professor Fishkin made, which is that you're literally starting with a blank slate, okay? We actually didn't have entirely a blank slate, although much of the state, for the most part, even though there were obviously existing districts, we, the only bounds we felt in terms of looking at our maps were complying with the Voting Rights Act in pre-clearance. Because there were certain counties that had to be looked at in terms of the current districts in order to make sure they weren't sort of backsliding in terms of new districts. But beyond that, the rest of the state was wide open in terms of thinking about how we were going to draw the lines. So to the extent you're, you're doing districting, not redistricting, this time around, it's a great opportunity to really engage the public. Yeah, this kind of harkens back in a lot of ways to sort of Athenian democracy, but you're drawing on a lot of, you know, interesting ideas and novel ideas and also some older ideas too. But again, this is a great exercise in democracy, so. Steve?
And so, thank you very much. Now it's your turn. If you have a question, we have a microphone here at the front, and just raise your hand, go ahead, right here.
Hello. My name is Larry Kellerman-Haffey, and I actually have two questions, but I'm going to pick the one I like best. My question is to Mr. Anchetan. You had, in those criteria you had for determining the districts, did you weight each one equally or did you have some system of ranking?
Yeah, they were ranked. So the top one, the constitutional requirements always trumped, and those are, even if they weren't written in, you'd have to follow the constitution, right? And even if you did have the Voting Rights Amendment, you have to follow the Voting Rights Amendment. So you can't, even if they weren't explicitly there, those would be the natural first two anyway. So they were in order, and if you had a conflict, the higher ones trumped the lower ones. Now, what is trickier though is that within a particular item, and the one dealt with cities, counties, neighborhoods, communities of interest, those were equal within that particular bullet. So, you know, you kind of ran into, well, somebody's advocating for a community of interest here, but that might, if we do it that way, it might divide part of a city or split a neighborhood. That's where we had to make some, and you have to exercise some judgment. That's part of your job as a commission, is to exercise good, sound judgment based on the information you receive, as well as, you know, what you know about the community and the state, for us, the state, for you, the city. So that helped a lot too, because it said, "Well, we have to follow the constitution, right? That's, we can't..." That's, we can't create a district that accommodates its neighborhood, because we're going to, you know, skew the size of the district. So that helped a lot.
And I actually have a sub-question. And that is, within each of the criteria, how did you define the constraining limits? And did you relax those limits on occasion for particular cases?
You're going to have to go through your own process of deciding certain things. So for example, when it comes to city districting, you actually have, you don't have to have precise, mathematical, exact population equality. There's actually some, at least the courts have decided with state and local districting, you have a little bit of leeway because of, you know, different concerns and boundaries and things like that. So you're going to have to come up with a decision, however. And you could certainly, as a matter of policy, say, well, all these districts have to be exactly the same size, you know. Maybe if it's, it doesn't quite add up because of the actual number of people in the city of Austin, you have to, one or two, or some of them have to be a little larger. But that's one thing. We set particular limits. We tried to define a little bit more neighborhood for cities that actually had neighborhood boundaries that were official, we relied on those. You're going to have to make some judgments, again, in terms of what different communities of interest are. And they may not align with what everybody says in the testimony, because people will disagree about... I mean, those, those different definitions may differ among people in the community, and even within the commission, because you can, you know, you can draft laws as precisely as you like. There's still going to be some room for interpretation. So, and that's, again, part of the normal process of trying to implement a law.
Other questions? And back, Mike, you walk. Right, standing in, up there.
Hi, my name is Dan Howell, and I'm the chairman of the Independent Voter Project in California. And I followed the entire process of the citizens' commission in California for a couple of reasons. First, because I co-wrote the top-two open primary initiative in California that changed the entire election process. And second, because my sister is the state auditor, and she chose all the candidates for the commission. So I paid a lot of attention. I went to some of the meetings. And immediately after the congressional delegation selection was added to the process, there was a concerted effort on the part of the Democratic Party to organize and finance a method of influencing the process. And I think that the commission did an absolutely remarkable job, sort of sorting out through those who were trying to influence the process in a very professional way, a well-funded way, and ordinary citizens who chose to participate and show up to meetings. So since you have a large number of people here, probably some of whom will serve on that commission, Commissioner, could you talk a little bit about the actual process of the work that you did, and how you were able to sort through those people who were trying to influence the process for their own personal gain or party gain, and actually getting down to the work that you completed in such a, again, remarkable way?
Well, you have, firstly, you should, of course, take things at face value, but you have to look a little bit deeper sometimes, because that's the nature of this kind of process. When you shift the power from one body to another, folks that used to have the power still want to have some influence on it, that's not surprising. You know, you had to look at the sources. And obviously, if someone says, I'm this person from this community, you're not going to say, are you really from that community? Although, that happened a couple of times, actually, in some of the hearings, because it got a little testy and a little redundant in some ways. But, you know, oftentimes, we would get maps or suggestions from, you know, an organization and going, I've never heard of this organization. You do a search on the web, you go, oh, I never, this doesn't even show up on the web. You know, it doesn't show up in a search. And then you start thinking, well, this is somebody, right? We don't know who at this point, but maybe we'll think about it. Then you sort of look at how the maps are drawn. Well, it's probably a partisan interest. This is somebody trying to get in there. And that's actually relatively transparent. Or you can figure it out fairly quickly. You know, the bottom line is, even if, even if we didn't figure out that it might have come from somebody else, or it came from, there were ulterior motives, for lack of a better term. If the suggestion made sense, and it sort of aligned with what we were thinking would be a good way to draw the line, even if it weren't really the true, the verity of, you know, the bracity of the person was entirely 100%, but, you know, it sort of made sense when you put the pieces together, we'd still use it. But yeah, again, and you'll probably have folks saying, well, I'm from this neighborhood. And even though it's really somebody, might be aligned with somebody, I won't point a finger at anybody in particular, but, you know, they're not entirely upfront about who they represent. You have to decide to get rid of the information. It might actually be helpful. But I think you have to be, you have to be mindful that that could happen in the process. But I think, you know, by and large, the majority, the vast majority of folks who came out of those hearings were folks who really just wanted to say something about the process. They were interested in it. They really felt that they could make a difference, and they said something. Now, again, you didn't follow everybody's advice, because you had to make choices. And that's always part of the process. But I think, you know, you think, I think most, and I trust that most people here, who are going to testify or give you information, will be quite upfront. And that's exactly what they're trying to do, is help you, help you make a decision.
Hi, my name is Rob Johnson. A question for Commissioner Anchetto. We're basically asking 14 of us, who have probably never met each other before, to come together in a limited time period and do something that can only be described as revolutionary, and it's never been done in the state of Texas before. So when you were a new commissioner, the 14 of you get in a room for the first time together, and you know the clock's running, what were some helpful things that you all did to pull together and kind of reach that touchstone of common purpose? I know from the lunch talk that you gave today, most of the maps passed on a 13-1 vote, and one or two were on 12-2. What do you do to build consensus out of that diverse group when you're under time pressure and nobody's really prepared for the task at hand?
And again, I think, I want to reinforce that point about the fact that the, even though we had disagreed, and would have disagreements on a lot of things, I'm sure, everybody had a strong, common sense of purpose. We have to put these maps together, and we have to go through a process that is open and that is responsive to the public. Okay? And that gets you a long way, actually, when you have a sort of sense of common purpose. And because of those values, that you're actually trying to get people's opinions, think about them, use them, that drove a lot of the decision-making. So even though, you know, obviously, you know, I live in California. I have opinions about where I think communities are. So that's part of it, too. You might say, I'm not sure if that, you know, that last piece of testimony is actually quite right. I think it's a little bit different. And I did that in meetings, was saying, you know, I might not disagree that that's actually where the neighborhood is now, compared to, say, 10 years ago. And that's, I think that's okay to do as well. This was a group that actually got along. I think everybody got along with each other well. So, you know, just in terms of, you know, the kind of interpersonal skills, communication skills, you know, we weren't allowed to talk about our work, although we kind of whined about things. Which you're going to do, right? You hang out and have lunch together, have dinner together. You're going to talk about, you know, oh, I can't believe somebody said that, whatever. That kind of stuff is always going to happen, whatever task you undertake. But it was a group that got along well. I think, you know, I think the selection panel, and I think this would have applied to any number of folks in the pool, they really look for folks who could be good team players. And I think that was absolutely a clear defining characteristic of all the folks who are on the commission now.
Hello, I'm Ray Maitland, this is Far North Center, Austin. I'm an engineer, so I need to ask about the mechanics. Once the commission gets seated, we would like to know, well, we have morning sessions, evening sessions, and when we have public input, you know, we have working people, and we have people who are at home. So is that time period going to be of variety so that we have, including all our citizens? Because that's one thing that we want to ensure. That's why we went in this direction. So I, you're really just asking the panel in general, not engineering in particular.
Well, and again, I think you can, you can think about it, you know, if you have an engineering background or an area of some expertise or knowledge of how you do project planning, it's not too different, which is sort of, start with your deadline. I think you have to set your deadline, but I think it's difficult to set the final deadline. And kind of work backwards and think about the process. Think about subdivision, working in teams that might have to have some specialized... If you have expertise, it helps with terms of legal stuff or financial stuff. You know, we have folks who are particularly experienced with media or public relations and outreach, that kind of thing. You know, again, we had, we had a larger task. So we really had to spend a lot of time meeting all day long, particularly when we got closer to the final product. We always tried to make sure that, when it came to public hearings, those were done as a combination of evening and then maybe weekend, or Saturday afternoon, typically. But evenings are usually better. And we were prepared to go late into the night as long as we could have the building, you know. We relied a lot on, you know, city and county government to give us access. We had, you know, universities and law schools and various folks who, and that saved us some money, too, actually, just without having to actually pay for space. Again, you have a smaller task in terms of just the number of people you're dealing with and the number of districts, but you want to get out there and do some hearing. You're going to sacrifice some time if you're going to be on the commission. I mean, you know, obviously, you can't put life entirely on hold. If you have a full-time job, you might want to try to see if you can get some time off, particularly for hearing times. But you need to make the time as it gets, particularly as it gets to the point where you're actually drawing the maps, because you need to sit down and spend time with your consultants and look at maps. I mean, that's, looking at the software, looking at the, you know, the screen in front of you, and say, we'll move it over there. Can you do the, that's map drawing. You have to get into that, so that takes time. But be mindful of the fact that the public that you want to participate in doesn't, it's like the luxury of, I wouldn't say the luxury, but they have a different set of commitments than you will have as commissioners. So take into account what people's work schedules are, what people can do in terms of coming out. So that will guide some of your work. But I think ultimately, I think all of you who are applying know that it's going to take a lot of time in a short period of time. So your life will go back to normal. Relatively, I'm here today. But I, we all do a lot of work now. We did a lot, and I was working on the litigation team, so I did a lot after the maps were certified.